All right. I wanted to ask first, uh, why did you decide to jump back in?
Well, I've been thinking about running. But when I saw who I had signed up, there were some really good candidates and good friends and I didn't want to run against any of them. But we were on vacation. We were on an Alaskan cruise. And we were in hotel room there in Vancouver. And I saw on Facebook that Drew just then had decided to drop out and there was nobody in that spot. And place five was my old spot. So I said, well, heck, I'm just going to throw my name in the hat and see what happens. So we got in there. And like I said, place five is where I've been before. So I had some old signs. And I really enjoyed being on the council. That was a good four years for me. Um, I'm retired now. I've got more time to spend doing some things with the council. Of course, I love Trustful. I love everything about it and I want it to be a special place for a long time. I've seen how communities can greatly change and I just feel like, you know, I can help Trustful stay great for a long time. We're gonna have some new people on the council and a new mayor. And I feel like some of my experience can help them. I know the first year on the council is kind of hard, those first few weeks, months, just kind of learning the ropes, but I'm, I just, I think I can help Trustful and it would be good for me also.
Yeah. Did you like, when you saw that Drew had dropped out, you know, and just decided, you know, maybe not never, but not right now, did you, did you call him or anything before you announced or what?
No, I just, like I said, I was just sitting in the hotel room and I immediately started my Facebook post saying that I was gonna run. But like I said, I didn't talk to Drew, but when I saw that he had dropped out. I said, well, that's a good chance. Maybe that's a sign.
How weird if, how, and I know you don't, wouldn't want to run against, like you said earlier, but like, how weird would that have been if you would have ran against a former student? Cause like you were, you were our principal at the middle school.
Right. Um, I wouldn't have liked that, you know, I just, I just always, you know, enjoyed getting in other students and we had good relationships and, you know, if I knew they would do a good job like, like Drew and the others running, I'd let them have it.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I thought that was crazy. When I started thinking about it, I was like, well, you know, time, time certainly marches on and we all get a little bit older, you know?
Yeah.
Man, so reuse the place five. I was gonna ask why place five, but I didn't realize you were place five before, but hey, Wayne said the same thing. I had old place ones on, so place one it is, you know? What have, uh, I don't know, have you like, over these last, cause you, you ran for mayor in 16, right?
Yes.
It went to a runoff between you and Buddy.
Right.
I'm trying to remember it all. Okay. Buddy ends up winning. What, what all have you seen from the, from the city in the last, I guess nine, nine years then, nine years?
Most. Yeah. And, um, you know, Mayor, Mayor Milton was gonna run against and he, he always did a good job. I like
Sure.
Mayor Milton. But I just felt like it was time for a change and nobody else at the time had said they were gonna run. So I announced and thought it was just gonna be me and Mayor Milton. And then Buddy got in and I hated that because I like Buddy. He's, he's a great guy. And we got in and both got into the runoff and, and you know, he won and I think he's done a great job. I mean, these last nine years, gosh, Trustful continues to grow, continues to be great. You know, the, the mayor and council have cut a little slack recently because of the, the tax increase vote. And the garbage, uh, fee proposal.
Yeah.
But you know, that's just two things. Look at all the good things they've done in nine years. So, you know, I'm not gonna hold their whole nine years against them because of two things that, you know, some people disagree with right here at the end of their term. Uh, again, they've, they've done so many good things, the current council and mayor.
Yeah. Is there, is there like, even though those things are coming to light at the end, do you think it's been like, has there been any kind of buildup to this point or is it just been kind of sudden? Do you feel like?
I think the surprise, you know, maybe we should have anticipated it, but the, the, the lack of funding we got from the sales tax and the online shopping has killed us. Uh, we get such a small percentage of that compared to the percentage we get from buying at Windex or Target, Home Depot, you know, when people go online, all of those things, we get almost nothing. So that made a big difference and I think, you know, from here on out, we'll be more prepared, but I think it just surprised that there was such a difference this past year.
Yeah. So like, how do you, cause like online shopping isn't, it's not new, but like it continues to, it's becoming increasingly popular. We all do it, right? But like, is there anything they could have foresaw to help with the budgeting process as a city or, or what?
Well, I, I think they just didn't anticipate it to be so much of a difference. And I think we have got to depend on our state representatives, Shay Shellnut and Danny. They've got to do something to the state law that allows cities such as Trustful to benefit more from the online shopping sales tax. Cause statewide, our sales tax is 10 cents, online shopping is eight cents. So there's room to increase it and it not really make a difference in most people.
Right. That makes sense. Yeah. Like if I, I'm trying to remember too, Anthony, like back when, when were you on council again? What, what years?
It was, uh, 2012 to 2016.
Okay. Okay. That, that tracks. Like always, I, I kind of remember, cause I was, I was one of the few at all those council meetings back then, you know, me and Herschel and the fellas pretty much, but, um, do you like, I'm trying to remember some of those meetings back then. To me, you tell me if this is accurate or not, you seem to always be to me up there, the guy who would, I don't want to say like question things, but like wanted more information when it came to spending. Is that, is that accurate?
Right. I, you know, I've been a principal for several years and I was used to dealing with budgets. And I knew how, how careful we had to be in education, balancing our budget and making sure we had money before we did anything. And, uh, sometimes I just didn't think we were as clear or had as much information as we needed before we made some decisions. So I always tried to make sure before I voted on something that I had enough information.
Yeah. Do you think, do you think that's something like, just looking at kind of, you know, not being on this, these last couple administrations, do you, do you see anywhere where the city has maybe made decisions like that where it, it's felt quick? I have an example, but, um, maybe where, you know, where, where the city approved something or some, you know, spent something, whatever, where maybe it, um, maybe it wasn't out there for, for a long time or felt kind of rushed. Do you see anything like that at all or no?
You know, I think the things that we've done there in these past nine years have been very beneficial. Um, I, I think most people didn't realize that there were different pods of money. And I think when they saw the new softball stadium going up, the, the practice facility with the overhead topping like they have at Alabama and Auburn, you know, those are big time projects. And people saw that going on right about the time we were asking for a tax vote. And even though it's separate monies, people didn't see it that way. And I think that's what hurt us because Trustful has always been good to support our city. People love Trustful. They want it to maintain it's like it is now. And most people my age and older have seen what happened to our old communities. And I certainly don't want that to happen here.
Yeah. Yeah. Definitely. Like that's, you know, people need to go to more meetings. I, I mean, I've, I've been saying it forever now. I'm also, you know, I like to play both sides of it because I went to all those meetings back in the day when I was doing this stuff full time. So I was right there with y'all every, every other Tuesday night and I wouldn't see hardly anybody there. But at the same time, I think personally that the city, not just this administration, some past administrations, whatever. I think, I think some communication needs to be more often and clearer so that people do know what's going on when. There are some cities that are, there are some cities that are doing a really good job of that and I just think Trustful is a little bit behind them right now.
I think so too. I think our website can be improved and add some different things on it that gives more information. What's gonna be on the agenda? What are we talking about? What's, how much money? Is our budget and what are we looking at? I think the schools do a great job with that. They let you know that calendar way in advance of everything that's going on and everything that's going on at particular meetings and events.
Yeah, exactly. Like I think the, the, there's a couple of cities, but only one of them is coming to mind right now that I've used as an example. You'd probably be, be familiar with it, but Homewood, I think does a, a good job of that of putting agendas out and they're in like it's, they're in one spot. You know where to go. It's not just the city council. It's, you know, it's P and Z. It's even there. It's even there historical, because I'll pay attention to that a little bit because I've got a, I've got a buddy that's affiliated with Homewood history out there. That's actually a teacher and coach at Mountain Brook. And so like, so I'll, I'll see their kind of stuff and I'm like, man, this, this is how it should be. And it's out there in enough time. Everyone can see it. It's not just an email list that you have to request to be on, you know, and it's there and, and you know, it's there. And, uh, I just don't think that's a heavy lift to get fixed and that could honestly eliminate a bunch of issues for the city itself. It's gonna, hey, it'll cut down on calls that Stacy Frazier gets during the day. It's gonna cut down on calls that Dan Weiner gets, but it's gonna cut down on calls that Buddy and the rest of this council gets if, if stuff's just, I, I stopped short of saying transparent because I don't want to say that it's like they're, you know, trying to hide something. That's not what I mean. Just that, hey, it's just an agenda that we haven't taken action on. Here it is for everybody to see, you know?
Right. And then it will eliminate some rumors and misinformation that get out there.
Yeah. It'll, it'll help Tandy and the rest of them on what's happening in Trustful for sure.
Right. My daughter Katie and her husband Daniel Lincoln, they live in Homewood. And so I've become familiar with a lot of things going over there. And it is ideal. You know, you had Mountain Brook and Best State and Homewood. They were the big three for years. Trustful is getting there, but we're not there yet and we don't need to get there so fast. We can learn a lot from things they did on the way as they grew. Some of the mistakes they made, some of the things they did right. But, uh, Homewood's an ideal city, but they, they face some of the same issues. They had some old homes that have been torn down and newer, bigger homes built in their place. And the older residents didn't like that at first and we've dealt with that in the project. Uh, thankfully those in the project that have gone up have been fine homes and do fit in. But, uh, but you know, I think the mall there, that's just special and we don't need to do anything there on the mall. That's just that and the entry. That's just, to me, that's trustful.
Yeah. Well, and I mean, you know, you see the hat, but like I'll, not all of them that fit in. I'm gonna, I'll, I'll, I'll disagree on that. Not all of them that fit in.
Yeah.
Like they're not gonna name it, you know, it is what it is right now. That's a, ooh, that's a whole topic for another day for me, but, um,
gonna be like in 20 years.
Huh?
Some, in 20 years, you know, some of these older homes, uh, they're getting some age on them and something's gonna have to be done.
Well, and, and I'll say this too. Some of them are built, I say some of them, most of them are still in very fine condition because they were built with no economy of labor and they were, you've got guys that'll, that lived down there that say, my house was built like a tank and they've got an original roof from 1938 that still hasn't leaked. They ain't build, they ain't building them like that anymore. Now, the ones that have been, the ones that have been, uh, disregarded, abandoned, you know, you know, a family member passed and it went on to someone else in the family and they've just let it sit. Sure. Bad things are going to happen. It probably needs to come down if there's issues within that, that necessitate a demolition, of course.
Right.
To me, to me, at that point, it's about what you build back and that street facing exterior and aesthetic and scale and harmony. And there are places within the project that that has not been, uh, taken into account.
Yeah.
There are places.
I agree. There, there are some, but you know, I do worry, you know, a lot of those homes are two and three bedroom, one bath. And if we want young families to move into the project area, they're gonna have three and four kids. You're gonna have to make them a little larger.
Yeah. Oh, there's, and that's the thing. That's what, that's what I've been trying to like through the CHHF, what I've been trying to, and you know, I've got this book that's about to come out. All about the Khaba Project history. Um, that's what I've been trying for the last like four years to educate people on. Maybe you'll find this funny, maybe you won't. I am not one who likes to give any government entity a lot of credit. Especially, mostly I'm talking federal government. I'm not talking you, you know, just the big, the big guys, right? But if you go back and I know most people haven't done this because people very much like more to look forward than they do backward. Well, I'm a look backward guy because I love history. Um, those smaller homes, like you mentioned, like obviously there are tons of young families that have moved in already because of, you know, Tahaba Elementary opening nine years ago, kind of reawakened that area. And, um, a lot of those two bedroom, three bedroom, one bathroom houses. If you go back and look at the blueprints that the resettlement administration created back in the 1930s, there's, maybe I'll have a picture of it and I'll throw it in this podcast right here, but, um, they have a spot on the back of those houses that just said, it's a massive area that says future addition. So they had, they had, they had that in the works. So the people who get all up in arms that say, oh, you want these homes to stay tiny. That's not the case at all. That wasn't even the government's case back in the 1930s. They knew that people were going to eventually grow into these homes and need to expand.
And that's why I had the size to, to expand. They're nice sized.
Correct. Correct. And that they're talking about it in the back. So it's like your street facing exterior still maintains that aesthetic and that harmony and that scale while you get to create more space, more bedrooms, more bathrooms, all those things that you need on the back of the home, which most people have kind of adhered to. So that, so that's me giving the federal government credit for just one time.
Right. Okay.
We got to talk some history. I love it.
Yeah.
Well, so what, what are some of the, what do you see as some of the issues of Trustful's facing these next four years? Uh, this group got five because of COVID, but these, these next four years, what, what do you kind of foresee is the, the big undertakings for this next administration?
Well, of course, the budget is the main issue. And like I said, we just kind of gotten a bind here this past few months, but, but that can get better. There's ways that we can increase our budget and know more what we're working with and have a more balanced budget the next four years. Uh, I, I think that's important. I think we definitely have to continue to work with the schools. We have got to have another elementary school. Payne's too big. We've got to have another middle school or an expanded middle school. And we've got to have that third wing at the high school. People move to Trustful because it's safe. That's the main reason. And because we have great schools. So those are two areas that we've got to maintain a strong focus on. Our public safety in Trustful is second to none. Our police department. One of our policemen having somebody pulled over, that there's sometimes two and three cars there with them. That's safety right there. When I see our fire truck and our EMS vehicles going two and three at a time to, to an accident, that's important. So, um, you know, we've got to do what we can to maintain that level.
Yeah. What do you, how do, like, how do you shore up the, the budget stuff? Like, like, how, how do you get that back balanced? What, what are some specifics that the city can do?
Well, we, you know, we've got a lot of land in Trustful, you know, going out highway 11 toward Argo. There's a lot of space out that way. Going out Tahaba, South Chalkville Road, there's a lot of space out that way to grow. We can bring some more industries to Trustful. Industries provide tax base. They provide jobs. And they don't add a whole lot of traffic. So, you know, that's gonna be one of our number one focuses is bring more industry to Trustful. Um, housing, you know, there's gonna be more housing. We just gotta make, make sure that it's the right type of housing. We've got to limit apartments, you know, I've seen what apartments can do to communities. They start off beautiful, fine and great, but in 10 years they get to wearing down. And, uh, you start having a lot of crime in those areas. And again, that's what we, we don't have here. Our police do a great job of keeping criminals out of Trustful. You know, if you get a shady person driving through Trustful, they're gonna check them out. They're gonna make sure that they're in Trustful for the right reason and not just scoping out neighborhoods and looking for places to rob or things to do like that. So, uh, again, I commend our police. They, they, they're one of the most important things here in Trustful that we have to keep our community like it is. The schools are important. But Woodlong, Banks, Irwin, Huffman, those were great schools, great communities. But when crime came into those areas, you see what happened there. And that can happen here. I've seen it happen all over the state, but because of the police department here, we're gonna be fine. Our schools are gonna stay great.
Yeah. You mentioned, uh, like the limited, like the apartments, like limiting that. And I know that's been a long time thing here. I'm curious because I didn't follow it like super closely. I've just seen what people have said and kind of know the baseline gist. What, like, was there anything else that the city council could have done with the whole deal on Service Road where it was selling it for a $2 million loss? Like, like was there anything that could have been done differently at all?
I think maybe we could have prepared some things earlier. I think we waited till that came into be before we started trying to figure out ways to do something with that property. That property's been there a long time.
A long time, yes.
And it's valuable property. Uh, of course, right there at the end of Deerfoot, you know, something I would like to do, and again, we can't do it right now, but when the money gets back like it needs to be, we've got the best walking trail around. And if we can extend that thing, we go through the ballpark, we go up behind the, the middle school, we go across to the high school and across the river and, and go up Husky Parkway and have a park there on Deerfoot, big enough for that part of the town to enjoy. And have the walkway where they could walk from there to downtown Trustful if they wanted to. But to me, that's just an ideal area to extend that walkway.
Yeah. Well, that's a good one. Where, now that the Glendale stuff has come to an end again, uh, where can you build a fourth elementary school?
Uh, of course, there, there's several areas. I mean, there's South Chalkville Road. You know, cause those kids are having to go a long way to go to Payne.
They're passing Magnolia to go to Payne.
Yeah. And then, uh, of course out toward Argo, out those roads out that way, uh, there, there's some properties out there that would make, uh, great schools. Um, again, 1300, that's, that's too many for an elementary school.
Much.
Uh, 400 to 600 is ideal. But, uh, but luckily we've got great administrators. We've got great teachers. We've got great facilities at Payne and they do such a good job of working with that many kids, you know, it's not been a factor.
Yeah. What was the, what was the largest enrollment at a school when you were an administrator?
When I was at the middle school, we had 900 when I was principal at the middle school.
Oh, so that probably would, how long were you there? Cause I, you were my principal, but that would, I don't remember when that would have been. Late nineties, early 2000s?
I was there, um, nine years as principal. I was at the high school as an assistant principal. We had, uh, 1300 up there at that time.
Okay.
Of course, when Trustful formed their system and, you know, people don't realize there were a lot of people against Trustful forming their own school system back in the day. The, the current council and mayor at that time, they, you know, they were worried about the financing. And, uh, you know, if we could afford it, my brother-in-law Dennis Hill, he was a strong opponent of pushing for the school system. And, uh, you know, through their efforts, he and the other council members, they were finally able to convince Mayor Mayor to go along. And look, look what it did for our city. What had we not, what would have happened had we not done that? We split with Clay Chalkville.
Yep.
And Clay Chalkville, when it opened, gosh, what a great school. We lost a lot of students, good teachers to that school.
Yep.
But because we didn't have the control over it that we did Trustful, look at the difference in the two schools now. Clay Chalkville High School is a great school, but it still doesn't have the resources that Trustful has. Um, that's the advantage of having your own city school system.
Yeah. I did not realize that. You said Dennis Hill's your brother-in-law?
Yeah.
I had no idea.
Okay. Yeah. His, you know, I married to Phyllis Hill. And her dad, Steve Hill, they live right down the street from us when we met and started dating. He, uh, he built and ran the old dairy cone there in Trustful. And, uh, he and his mother-in-law Granny, they had some of the best fried chicken in Trustful. He later moved over toward Chalkville and ran the Chalkville Food Store. And that's to Phyllis. And from that, that old Chalkville Softball Park was right there. I was a member of Chalkville Civitank. And, uh, I became the chairman of the, I ran Chalkville Softball Park for 13 years. And we had church teams and church league there Monday through Saturday night and tournaments on the weekend. Um, you know, and that got me out of debt for a little while. You know, I enjoyed getting to know all those people playing softball there all those years. But I did that when I first started teaching. Still, I started teaching at Hewitt Junior High, right when I graduated from Alabama in 1978. 1978 was a big year for me. I graduated from Alabama. I started teaching at Hewitt Trustful Junior High. Orville Eubanks hired me. He was my principal there. And then I married Phyllis in December of 1978. So that, that was a big year.
That was a busy year.
Yes.
That's a busy year. Wow. I didn't realize that. Cause yeah, I've done, you know, a lot of stories, the history research, whatever, all that kind of stuff about how Clay Chalkville kind of was born out of nowhere when Trustful first tried to form the system, starting in, was it 92 that they first started? That, that process?
Well, they actually started before and the first time, you know, it failed.
Yeah, that, that's the one I'm talking about. Like in the early nineties when it failed?
Mm-hmm.
Wow. Yeah. Cause like I've, I've talked to, usually I'm, I'm spending a lot of time with this year's Clay Chalkville football team, working on a project. And, uh, I've, I've talked to them. I'm like, you know how your school got started? And they're like, no. I'm like, you know how long your school's been around? And most of them, most of them were like, I, I don't really know. And I'm like, because Trustful tried to start their own and then y'all were born out of that when the, when Trustful ultimately stayed with the county to ease some overcrowding in the nineties?
Yep.
So funny. I had no idea that that's who that was. And then I tell them that their bleached, that their home bleachers came from Shades Valley Stadium and they're like, what? I'm like, yeah. I'm like, y'all didn't have nothing. You had to, y'all had to get some scraps from somewhere. So y'all are sitting on Shades Valley's hand-me-downs right now.
Yeah. Yeah. They probably don't want to hear that.
They, it, I don't know. It seems like it lights a little bit of a fire, not that they need it, because they're gonna be really good and all that. And they're about to get their, a new, sounds like they're about to get themselves a new high school and a new football stadium here in the next little while. They say, they say, you know, they tell you a timeline and then as you know, construction timelines tend to go from this to, to like that. But we'll, we shall see.
Yep.
But yeah, that's interesting. Wow. Learn something new every day. Seriously. It continues to grow here. It continues to grow here, but somehow it still feels small in those kinds of ways.
You're right.
Yeah. What about your your, I mean, you said you're retired now. Did, uh, what about your? Your kind of school education background, being an administrator? How how does that lend itself? Because you've been on council, you've run for mayor, so I know it helps, but how does it help? Now, like with the with the issues and all the things that Trustful seems to be. Facing now and it it feels like a turning point in a way because like you said, you are going to have so many new. New faces, you're definitely going to have a new mayor, you're going to have some new faces on council for sure. Um, how how do those experiences kind of translate to now?
Well, when I. Left being principal at Hewitt Trustful Middle School, I was a director for Trustful City Schools. And during that time, my responsibilities were maintenance, new construction. Lunchrooms and transportation. And during that time, we did a lot of building and adding on. So I got to build good relationships with a lot of contractors and builders of schools during that time. So I know what we need to do. To prepare to get those things done. And our school system now, they they know what to do. It's just a matter of having the funds to do it. So we've got to come up with the money. You know, I have no problem at all naming a middle school lunchroom after somebody. I have no problem at all naming the third wing of the high school after somebody. We've got people with a lot of money in Trustful. And I'm hoping that we can do a better job of getting them to, uh, maybe donate some of that money to help these schools out. Uh, because they got grandkids coming through these schools and they want them to continue to be great. So that's one thing I want to say. When I went back to Jefferson County, Jefferson County had sixty-plus schools. And they were building all over the place. So again, those relationships that I built with some of the contractors during those years. Was was helpful to me and seeing those budgets and seeing what was necessary. And, you know, what could be built now and what could be built later. The, uh, the time I spent when I retired from public education, I had forty years in and. You know, one of the great things about education is its retirement system. We got a great retirement system. We can retire and get about half our salary. And then go out and get another job. Well, I was fortunate to become principal at John Carroll High School. Which is, uh, you know, a very historical school in Jefferson County, uh, one of the. Nicest schools in Jefferson County, great alumni. And I've seen, we we had a. We had a director of alumni affairs over there. He had a full-time job just keeping in top contact with our alumni, but the money came in. I saw first. Money would come in from those alumni and we included them in everything we did there at those schools, at ballgames, at events, at choir concerts. We recognized different classes and different accomplishments over years. So I think that was very helpful for me also.
Yeah, for sure. How different is Trustful now versus the last time you were on city council?
Traffic?
More of it.
But, you know, I drive into Stockton and Carrington, you know, and I forget how big those communities are.
Lord, yes.
But they are beautiful. And I see all those kids playing outside and I I love it. And I, you know, it's just what a great place and a great opportunity for those families to raise their kids. So, uh, it it's different in that respect that there are more subdivisions, but they were done the right way and I'm I'm proud of that. The, uh. The other differences, I've. Gosh, I I don't know, you know, our ballparks have grown, but we had great. Little league programs back in the day. All of our kids were involved. The schools have always been great, uh. You know, other than more people and more traffic, that's the big biggest difference. And that's not so bad, you know, and they're working on some of these roads and we're going to continue to do that. And when they get that third lane of the interstate built, that's going to help people get up. Out to Deerfoot a little better and eventually get out to Argo. So, uh, you know, things are improving.
Yeah. How how hard is it? Help help explain this because. I mean, I've I've covered. Y'all's stuff, you know, council stuff for years and have written numerous times about it. I still get confused about it. And so I know a bunch of people who. Who are paying attention more so this election cycle that haven't really paid attention in the past at all. Like, I know they get confused about it. When people complain about congestion, uh, traffic flow. May maybe even to some degree, conditions of certain roads, that kind of thing. Explain to people how like what Trustful maintains, what's county, what's state? And how y'all's hands can sometimes get tied.
Now, throughout Trustful, there are certain sections that are nearby that border us that are either in Birmingham. Or in unincorporated Jefferson County. And a lot of people don't realize that. And they'll say, you know, a stretch of roadway that's in pretty good shape and then it gets bad and then it gets good again. And they don't realize that Trustful's not going to spend our money to maintain a Jefferson County road. Uh, so, you know. Hopefully, uh, you know, some of those areas, we can. Annex in the city so that it's, you know, one solid. Bounder here at one time. One thing I regret when I was on council. Going up over the hill towards Chalkville. Uh, top of hill there, there's a church and two brick cones. Miss Bolton, she drove a bus for us. And I remember at one time, she wanted her properties there to be annexed into Trustful. And and we voted against that. And looking back, what a great spot to have been welcomed to Trustful. There at the top of that hill as you're coming over the hill from Trustful. And I just regret that because I thought the world of the Boltons. And, uh, you know, something we should have done.
Is that is that the property that there was talk, it was, they were going to build, was it like a retirement? Uh, facility or something like that? Okay, I remember that vaguely. I know, yeah, I know the property you're talking about and I I thought that was part of that potential plan. It's windy outside.
It is. When I was on the council. I was I was very against additional car lots being built on Highway eleven. And that's why where the church is down there where a current cop car lot is being built now, that's taking forever. Can you believe how long it's taken to prepare that land?
Well, so we have, we have a five-year-old who's currently into like, you know, you 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 have a son. When they're five, they're into things that move, right? It's tractors, monster trucks, you know, all the. Construction equipment. And so like honestly, his whole life so far. He's gotten every bit of construction equipment he can handle living here in Trustful. And so like, every time we pass what was Eastminster. Like, we cut, we kind of joked that like, oh, that's just where they go to play in the dirt because it's taking so long.
It has taken so long. And I know they've run into cop, so many problems. I I know that's cost somebody a lot of money. But when they get through, it's going to be a nice facility. It's going to be nice. It's going to be a good addition to Trustful. Looking back, I wish it could have been something else.
I agree. I agree. Well, because like, well, didn't it? I can't remember all this stuff off the top of my head, but wasn't there a time where something was voted against there, but then later it was voted for? Or something?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember the specifics. I just remember it was like a no and then sometime down the road, it was then a yes and I don't know. I don't know. Fun stuff. Well, what are the next? Let's see. Well, you you've got, we're finally less than two months away. Slide that cup over a little bit that way.
Okay.
There you go. What like, what what's the next almost two months look like for you?
From eight weeks from this coming Tuesday. And, you know, to me, that's getting more into campaign. Season, February, March, April, that's too early. I wish we didn't do that. I did it when I ran before. And it's just such a long, a long time. Best people put signs in their yard. So I'm going to have another big push for signs here as it gets a little closer because it's tough to cut around those signs and lift them when you're cutting grass and those types of things. Uh, so they can be annoying, but, uh. With with just the two months ago, it's going to get serious now. The lady running against me, she's great. You know, she 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 will be a good, um. She will she will be a lot of help here in Trustful. She's got a lot of good ideas. I certainly hope I win, but I I hope that the people that don't win, I hope we can keep them involved in things we're doing in Trustful. When I lost, when I lost mayor, I still loved Trustful. I still wanted to do things. But I didn't get involved and stay involved in in other areas that I could be involved in. So I'm hoping all the candidates that lose, we can encourage them to be a part of something. Uh, to help us here in Trustful, make it to be the best we can be.
Yeah, there's no doubt because it, I mean, it, I would imagine it takes. Uh, I can't imagine what it, it's got to take a lot to to put yourself out there like. You know, especially for like a council spot or certainly a mayor spot, like the strain that that puts on yourself, that it puts on your family. That kind of thing. I know how much time I put in and I'm just on, you know, uh. You know, one of the city's boards that the council appoints, you know, and. And if that, it's, you know, I I'm on my niche, so I love it. But like, I can't, I can't even imagine being on. A planning and zoning or a design review or, you know, public safety or something like that. So.
So it's asking a lot. And, you know, thank goodness the mayor's job now is a full-time job. But, uh. You know, and that's one reason I thought now, being retired, I would have more time to put into it. Because when I was working in the schools, you know, from six thirty to five thirty and ballgames in the evenings, it was hard. But, you know, it can be done and, you know, whoever wins, they'll do a good job.
Yeah, no, that's that's, you're you're right. Like, and that's kind of my was my point is like. You know, even even if, you know, because obviously there will be people that. That lose in every place except for place two since Brian Jackson ended up on a post. Man, I I know he, man, he's he must be living right because he announces and Allen pulls out and then. Nobody else decided to qualify for two, so he's already there.
Would jump in there. But, you know, I've lived in Trustful twenty-seven years. I've worked in Trustful twenty-eight years. I was on the city council. All my kids went to Trustful schools and, uh, you know, I enjoyed their time there and, you know, what I, what most people don't. Know and I'm I'm bragging because I'm proud, but all three of my kids were valedictorians. At Hewitt Trustful High School. That that was kind of neat.
None of us could keep up with Katie in class of oh-six, so.
We had great kids, but I was student body president at Woodlong back in seventy-four. And when I was coaching wrestling, we won the state championship at Penson Valley. Back in the eighties. So I followed Hank Williford. He was a great wrestling coach over there. And when I got hired at Hewitt Junior High in nineteen seventy-eight, I was hired to coach wrestling. I'd never seen a wrestling match in my life. But they had a good program and I had great kids. I had Jeff Saxon, Tyson Muncher. Mike Murphy, uh, several kids there that helped me and they helped me prepare practices. And the three years I was wrestling coach there, we had three undefeated seasons. It was. But those wrestling matches, they were exciting. So, uh. It's it was good times.
That is, that is. So we'll we'll wrap this thing, um. You got signs going out. Are are you doing any of the? How how are you going to treat the campaign now that it ramps up over the summer? Like, do you? Just go to more things? Do you do this whole meet and greet thing? How how do you kind of look at it?
Attend as many events as I can. You know, whenever I see, um, something going on, I'm going to try to be there. I know school starts back before the election. That's good. There'll be some ballgames and those types of things. I feel pretty comfortable with the the people that are thirty-eight and older. That have lived in Trustful a while, they know. The the younger group that's brought these new families in. We've got a lot of new families with young kids. They don't know me. You know, if if they went to school here, they they and have kids in school, they they know my kids and. And 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 nobody, but I've got to do a good job of getting to know the younger families better. And that's why I've got to depend on my friends and supporters to reach out to the new people. To let them know, uh, hopefully some good things about me.
Yeah, you gotta get you, you gotta get you a, uh, get you some social media, get you a Facebook page, get you the Instagram. Get you on TikTok or something, you know. Get your website.
Hopefully we can get those things done.
Yeah, I'm joking about TikTok. Please don't do that. That's, I've I've been told I need to do that like for our our history stuff and, you know, just some other things, book stuff. And I'm just like. I'm stopping short there. Like, I just, we've got, we've got enough apps. I don't need another.
But again, just, uh, public safety, to me, that's number one. Good schools, that's right there with them. Keeping our property values like they are. I mean, it's amazing to me how much property values have changed since I've moved to Trustful. It's great. Um, and good employees. You know, you go into any, you go to the chamber, you go to the civic center, you go to the city hall. Everybody's always so nice. I think everybody's done a good job of bringing the right people into certain positions. And speaking of our civic center, it it's incredible. And I think more people need to take advantage of that. But what a great place for meetings and what a great place to swim and exercise, uh, play pickleball. How much does that? Changed in the last two or three years? Everybody plays pickleball now. It's incredible.
I haven't tried, I haven't tried it yet. I don't want the bug to get me.
For them, they they built the course for them. You know, Trustful does what the citizens want. And I'll say to that for them, you know, whoever's in there. But, uh, again, and, you know, letting people know the schedule, letting them know when the brush cleanup is going to be. Because I'll put brush outside and they'll sit there sometimes for several weeks. When I, if I knew it was coming on a certain day, I could get it out there a couple of days before and it wouldn't went so messy for a month and turn on my house. So, you know, those are the kind of things that I feel like we can do.
For sure. Well, let's wrap it right there. I appreciate you doing this.
I appreciate you, Gary. What a good job you do for our city. I appreciate that. And for having all the candidates on there and and the other people that you have. I've listened to several of your podcasts of people not running for office and. It's 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 been very interesting. Thank you again.
Yeah, it's it's fun. Labor of love. I love to do it. And I don't have to write anything from it after. I can just put this out there and everybody can listen. Makes my job easy. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Have a good one.